It is 6:15. I will call to order this workshop of the Waco Board of Trustees. We do now have a forum present and we're going to go into closed session under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. Thank you for your time.
It is 7:40. We've been in closed session under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. No action was taken. We will move on to Audience for Guests. Pam, I've got a question for you.
Yes?
Under our board policy, if you have Audience for Guests at a regular meeting, you can talk about anything you want to talk about. If it's at the workshop meeting, you've got to talk about something that's on the agenda. Do you want to come back next week and talk about whatever you want to talk about, or do you need to do it tonight?
It'll be too late.
It'll be too late?
It'll take me a while to give away.
I'm going to give you a couple of minutes and we will be in direct. I am, go ahead. Get up here and tell us about it, because we want to hear about it.
If I read it fast, I do it in half.
I'm going to hold you to that.
All right. You know who I am? I'm Pam Cooper, President of the Waco AFT. And Dr. Nelson, I'd like to say thank you for the three community meetings. Your concern for the district demonstrates your caring for our students, faculty, and Waco needs to be proud of our schools. I'm a product of all the Waco schools, and I'm proud to be a teacher. One of our goals this year is to help provide teachers new to the district 25 books of their choice to create a classroom library. We also want to plan to give students that are part of PACAHOPE books to start their personal library. And our giveaway will be December 2nd in the gym at the Brazos Recovery Center, which used to be Lake Waco Montessori. And I'd like to already thank the custodial and maintenance staff for making the gym ready for us. So the people in the district that are working for us are awesome, and we hope to see all y'all December 2nd. We'll put you to work and give away books.
And see, and even by mentioning those town hall meetings, I think you did talk about something on the agenda. So we're even legal. Way to go. Appreciate it. All right. Pam, thank you. Appreciate everything AFT's done on that giveaway to help, again, not only kids with PACAHOPE, but the new teachers so they can build a classroom library, and it is, y'all have done great work. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Brings us to Discussion and Updates, Item 5. Financial reports are in your board packet. Ms. Davis, anything you wanted to highlight other than, no, does anybody have any questions on the financial reports? All right. We'll let her keep her seat. You also have a report on purchases over $25,000. Were there any questions on that? I believe it's on page 15. All right. Then we will go on to Lone Star Governance, Item 5C. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, continuing our Lone Star Governance conversations tonight, what we've selected is to begin first of a series of conversations we'd like to have regarding our special education program. Our Director of Special Education, Mrs. Dana Pate, is out this evening. She had an injury with her ankle. But we do have a suitable replacement. The Special Ed Coordinator, Ms. Lori Tressel, who's responsible for secondary special education and assessment, is going to assist me in this presentation that we're, we'd like to make that is directly related to our goal progress measures of improving student outcomes. For the record, 7:46.
We have to track the time we've been on screen.
I understand. I understand.
So the first thing, if you'll just bear with us, Ms. Tressel and I have met on this. We also met with Mrs. Pate. And we're going to change the format a little bit, but we think it'll allow you to get an understanding of why we selected this as an introduction. I'm sure all the trustees know that in addition to our taper report and other monitoring systems, one of our main monitoring systems is what we call PBMAS, or PBMAS is what I'm used to calling it. And it is basically the Performance-Based Monitoring Analysis System. PBMAS is a report that comes from the Texas Education Agency annually, and it is rating our effectiveness in monitoring student outcomes, particularly in the areas of career and technical education, bilingual education, and the topic tonight, special education. If you'll turn in the presentation we've prepared for you at your docket, on page two, we have a brief overview of the PBMAS system. Ms. Tressel, can you give a special ed perspective on why PBMAS is important?
Yes. The PBMAS goes a little bit deeper than the taper. And as Dr. Nelson, thank you, Dr. Nelson, by the way, and thank you, Board, for allowing me this opportunity. It does go a little deeper, and it drills down specifically on SPED indicators. And it does the same for CATE and bilingual ESL. And as far as these indicators, there are 11 of them, and it basically kind of tells you about the health of your special ed program. And it also helps you to drive the decisions that you're making in your SPED program based on student outcomes and performance. So you'll see there that out of these 11 indicators, they're assigned a performance level of either zero to four. Zero is good. Four is not as good. So we'll be taking a look at those targeted performance levels throughout the PBMAS. And you'll also see that we have indicators from zero, ranging from zero all the way to four.
So let me restate. On pages three and four, you see the 11 indicators that PBMAS monitors for special education. We won't read them all to you, but the major ones are star passing rates. I shouldn't say the major ones. All 11 are important.
Absolutely.
But the star passing rates is directly tied to our other monitoring systems that we use with this board, including Lone Star Governance, taper, et cetera. So star passing rates, special education numbers in early childhood programs, how many kids are, the percentage of kids, special education students that are receiving regular, being able to go to regular classes.
Correct.
Dropout rates, graduation rates, so on and so forth. So we won't go in depth. We will, over the next few presentations, get into those a little more in-depth, but we just wanted you to know the indicators. And then if you'll turn to page five, what Ms. Tressel was saying is that in PBMAS, you get one of four scores. I guess I should say one of five scores. A zero, a one, a two, a three, or a four. And to make a long story short, you're supposed to be getting fours.
Zeros.
Excuse me, zeros.
Well, that's a problem.
Well, bear with me. I apologize, and better me than you.
Is it bowling? Are we doing bowling or golf?
Right, 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 right. And, you know, I don't want to criticize, but that's one of the problems, that you have all these systems that we're expected to spin all the plates on. But in any case, we do not want threes and fours.
Correct.
We want zeros and ones. So that's the impetus for the next pages that we're about to discuss. And I'm going to let Ms. Tressel explain, starting on page five, some of our findings. But I just want to say, you don't, you don't really need a special ed certification to see that if threes and fours are bad, when it comes to star passing rates, we have all threes and fours. And without getting into it, we're about to get in trouble with TEA over this in a whole nother way that we're already facing sanctions. So Ms. Tressel, would you like to explain the next few slides of data that have been prepared by your department?
Yes. Up at the top, you'll see that this first indicator is the star three, grades three through eight passing rates. And then you can see those performance levels that Dr. Nelson was referencing. You've got, for math, you can see that we had a performance level of three. And again, that zero is what we would want, and that would mean that 70% of our special education students would be passing. And you can see down there with those scores, we have the 2015, 2016, and 2017. You see the green was the 15 scores, and that was a 23. So we've had some gains. And 2016, that was 29.4, up to the 33.6 this past year. And so our significant gains were with the math, and yet you can see with the reading, just incremental gains there. Up at the top, again, the reading was a three with that 70% pass rate again. And then you can see that the 65% with the science, but yet we were a level three with them as well. Social studies, we took a dip. They're especially in 2016, and that is a performance level of four. And writing was a three as well. So...
I don't mean to spot, but what happens if you have a four several years in a row?
That is definitely something we have to address. And you can see that we have, yeah, taken a look at that.
It doesn't really matter what the sanctions are. The bottom line is, we don't want fours.
Absolutely.
And just like we don't want Fs coming this spring, and these are things that we have to address. And you'll see on some of the upcoming slides, we have pockets where we're doing what we're supposed to do, but clearly too many threes and fours. This page is all threes and fours. Would you like to take us through Indicator 2, Ms. Tressel?
Yes. That one is STAR, Year After Exit, Grades Three Through Eight Passing Rates. And so those are students who were formerly served in special education, and now they are no longer served in SPED for a number of reasons. One primarily might be that they no longer meet the eligibility criteria. And so let's say if we have a student with an emotional disturbance, and they no longer qualify as a student under TEA with an emotional disturbance, they would be exited from special ed. And so TEA, they want us to track the performance on state assessment for those students. And you can see, those, I do want to mention that those are not the same students from year to year. So it's a kid that is in SPED, and now they're not. So that's not going to be the same students. But you can see that, again, with math, we are performing the best there, but we did drop off this past year from 42 to a 36.6. So again, those are all threes for that category.
So on Slide 7, which is Indicator 3, and you'll see that we've made the first three indicators, with all due respect to the other ones, the first three are directly tied to the STAR tests.
Right.
And so we need to be mindful of this, because this is how our kids are being assessed. On Slide 7, Indicator 3, this is for special education performance on the STAR tests and of course, passing rates. So these are our special ed kiddos at the high school, and they're being expected to take biology, algebra, ELA, all US history, all of the EOC tests. In math, you see some good work, some improvement. And I really choosing to present this because you're responsible for secondary, right?
Correct.
And I would build a respectful case publicly that this is your baby. These are some of the areas where we really want to support you better to not have a three in math, a three in science, a three in social studies, and a four in ELA. You have anything you'd like to add before we move on to the other indicators?
I, I think I have a couple of things I would like to say about the ELA. That's absolutely unacceptable. I think we know that. I think one of the things that we might want to consider as a contributing factor is a lot of times when we have students that were taking a look at accountability, we have a lot of these other assessments that they get in oral administration. So we're able to read those tests to them. But yet you can see that when they're actually having to do that for themselves, that they are struggling with that reading component considerably.
Appreciate that. So members of the board, if you would go to Slide 8, on this slide you see several indicators, because they start to get, well, they're just not as clearly delineated by STAR performance. Indicator 4 is participation rates on the STAR ALT tests. You'll see that we received a two. And to achieve a zero, we have to have less than or equal to 10%
Right.
of students on the participation rate. I won't read them all to you. You can see our scores. Should highlight, could you explain the area where we got a zero?
That is the one where we're looking, it's an LRE, Least Restrictive Environment. And so we are required by law as far as including kids. We take a look at what is the least restrictive environment. And that's where we are educating our disabled students with non-disabled students to the maximum extent appropriate. And so we're doing quite well there. I will say, in the state of Texas, it was, it used to be called access to the general curriculum. And here, a couple of years ago, they changed it because we are, you can see, we've got the zero. Kids are getting more access into the classrooms, but now they've changed that from AGC to PGC, which is progress. And so you can see that we are doing the access part quite well with the zero, but as far as the progress in the general curriculum, we need to see improved state assessment scores.
You know, so from ages six to 21 in our special ed program, our district is doing a great job moving kids and moving special ed kids into, including them
Absolutely.
in the general ed population. Kid's not performing well, it's a whole nother problem, but we're moving them in there.
Yes.
So I just, you gotta think about that, because it's pretty easy for the adults to make scheduling decisions and move kids into special ed. But if we're not going to teach them at a level that they deserve, we'll, we need to be held accountable for that.
Right.
Are there any questions from the board on Page 8 on a particular indicator that maybe you'd like to understand?
Yes.
Mr. President? Mr. Manning?
I just have one question. What's the percentage of our students that's involved in this?
Approximately 10%, right, right under 10%. Like 9.8.
So what, I mean, what, we got about 14,000 students with this?
I think it's roughly 1,100.
1100.
Mm-hmm. Let's run this.
So if there's no further questions on Page 8, I would turn us to the last few. Oh, I apologize.
My question is, if we are, you know, we've got a zero as far as, you know, keeping the kids in the regular ed class, but is that, do you think that's contributing at all to the fact that we're having such low scores? I mean, do you think that, you know, that there's a correlation there?
You know, the answer to your question is yes. You know, when you make a commitment to inclusion, which this district has made a firm commitment to, then obviously it, you know, I don't want to say this wrong, but it places the burden on the general ed teacher and the support, the differentiation that he or she. Now, when you had three or four low-functioning, perhaps, I should say, high-functioning but low-performing special education students, well, the, the classroom instruction has to be differentiated to include those kids. So we're kind of, either way, now, we could create resource classes where the kids don't get inclusion, but that's not, then we would have a low score on this.
Exactly.
And probably, so it's, it's a double-edged sword.
Is it, is there, or have you seen any models where they maybe do both, where you have inclusion and that, or, I don't know, I was just...
It's definitely a good model. You know, there are different models out there, and that's something for us to consider. You know, it's really driven by your PBMS. What we don't want to do is start pulling out all these kids out of the general ed program, and then have their scores come up, and our STAR PBMS goes up, but then we start getting fours on and allowing special ed kids to be in their least restrictive environment. So if a special ed kid can be successful in general ed, it's our job to provide him or her those accommodations, and then push the envelope on making them successful. But we do need to look at various models besides inclusion, or provide higher levels of support to our inclusion model.
Okay.
Good question. Any other comments or questions, Mr. President? Page nine is the last few indicators. Our dropout rate is currently on PBMS is a two. Graduation rate is currently a two. I won't get into some of these other findings, but, you know, but basically, we have, it's kind of, kind of ironic, you know, because of some of the previous data we've had with some of our discipline data. Right now, what we found is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Tressel, but our Anglo students have been over-identified for emotionally disturbed.
Yes. The threshold was 2.5, and we were at 2.6.
So obviously, that's a identification issue. Just like we don't want to over-identify African-American students for special ed unnecessarily. The whole, the same would hold true for our Anglo brothers and sisters. So that's, that's, that's our data reality, though, and we need to address that, and we will. So that is basically the data. And I'd encourage you to look at that. And like I said, this is the first in a series of meetings. I'm disappointed to report that we received our preliminary taper reports today. And while we're proud that the district has met standards as a district, and I quote, "The special education needs substantial"
Intervention.
interventions. Thank you, Mr. President. And so we got a lot of work to do, because the front page of our taper report is supposed to be clean. And the only thing on it is supposed to be things called distinctions. But for the second year in a row, we have been notified that our special education program needs higher levels of support. And I know we have hard-working people. Would you like to introduce your colleague who's here, Ms. Tressel?
Yes, this is Stephanie Nicholson. She's elementary coordinator.
So I know the department is working hard. I believe Ms. Tressel can confirm that this year has been unprecedented collaboration.
Yeah.
We've asked the special education department to be a part of all of our curriculum meetings. And our, our plans are to support those students and special ed teachers and general ed teachers in a way that clearly improves student outcomes. I'd like to thank Ms. Tressel, and really I'd like to ask you to explain this last page
Okay.
about things that we're going to do differently to improve this area. Ms. Tressel?
Yes. There are a number of things that we know we can't continue to do, to do the same thing and expect different results. And one of the things that we're doing is adopting, of course, Dr. Nelson's Super Seven. We're training and reviewing monthly for increased engagement of students. We know that we're seeing some impact there with some of those areas. We've recently begun a consultation with John Bullion. This is something that is new in the state of Texas, where they have these special education regional liaisons. And the purpose for them in the state is to increase the information that is coming through the state and local initiatives, and kind of marry those opportunities and focusing on innovative practices. Additionally, we are working, and like Dr. Nelson was saying, I, in the five years that I've been here, I am able to say that I collaborated more this year with other departments. I know TEA has said that a lot of times we've suffered from some silo mentality, and so we are collaborating more than ever in this district. And so we're working on some of those things with other departments, specifically curriculum. We know we've got some curriculum areas we've got to work on. And then also, we, I know, Mr. Manning, when you were asking a question earlier, we have begun, and also it was, Ms. Cortwig, your question about co-teach is something that we're trying as far as another delivery model. And we're taking a look at that, and we're piloting that actually at Carver. Mr. McAdoo was on board in wanting to pilot that, and we've got some collaboration. And see, the, the issue with least restrictive environment is when you've got kids, a special ed teacher doesn't have to have, like, a math certification. They don't have to have a content area certification. All they have to have is a special ed certification. And so who do you want teaching your kid math but the math teacher? And so in this case, we are trying a co-teach model where we've got our content area specialist, you know, teacher, and they're working with our special ed teacher as well in the classroom. And so we're working on the, the co-teach there. And then we also are implementing Anita Archer, its explicit instruction. And with this, it's, what does the research say works with kids? We began that early this year. We've trained all of our SPED teachers to some degree, but specifically for our IR campuses, we trained every one of our SPED teachers. And again, with the co-teachers, Mr. McAdoo had those teachers participate in that training as well.
So that really concludes our basic presentation. Are there any comments or questions, Mr. President, members of the board?
Manning?
One other question. I've, what is the funding for this? Do, I mean, I know you've probably got a whole bunch of unfunded mandates. Or do we have any special federal funding, state funding? I mean, I know, of course, we have to pay for a lot of this stuff. Do we have any special funds that we are using to help cover some of these costs, especially, you know, I'm thinking more like getting all the instructors, teachers, wherever, properly trained and everything like that. What, what do we do about that?
For the record, we've received a reduction in federal funds. So I would, I'd identify special education improvement as just part of our student achievement agenda. So we do have, we do receive special ed funds, so I don't want to mislead you. It's not enough to do what we're trying to do. We do use some of our professional development monies in special ed and general ed to support training our teachers. But no, it is, part of it is a funding model. See, as Mrs. Quarterwag said so well, if we had, if funding was no issue, we could probably have a combination of co-teach models and inclusion models, and we could put some extra teacher aides in every general ed class that were trained on special ed, but we're having to be good financial stewards of taxpayer dollars. And so, yeah, it's, it's unfunded.
So should this be another issue that we should take up with our state legislators about trying to increase funding for our special education departments?
Absolutely. What we're so proud of is that if you look at what we call our pyramid of interventions, just proud they were not, there was a time, I believe our local media can, has covered this, where we were over-identifying kids for special ed. And I've come from a district where we were accused of under-identification. So, you know, our identification numbers look good. We're not over-identifying, except for that one subgroup we talked about. And so we just want to be true to our pyramid. And we believe that before we start referring kids to special ed, there's a host of interventions that we provide for all of our kids, and the, it culminates with a referral to special education. And so we're really just trying to train our teachers more on what we expect in terms of instructional interventions. You have anything to add, Ms. Tressel?
I would agree with that, that we are doing a significant amount of training. And there again, we're doing a lot of cross-training this year that has not been done in the past. And we're beginning monthly meetings. Again, with this PBMAS, that's CATE, bilingual ESL, and special ed. And those monthly meetings are something that is new to the district to address these needs.
Other questions or comments? I do have one observation.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not sure exactly how to articulate it, so it may be a long, rambling observation. I am impressed that the special ed department and the superintendent have taken ownership of the scores such as they've been presented. There was a time 10 or 15 years ago when the fact that we got zero ones and twos on those last eight indicators would have been put on great big slides, and the fact that we were getting threes and fours on those first three indicators would have been on a teeny-tiny font at the bottom of the page, hoping nobody would notice it. And I just want to commend you for creating an atmosphere where folks do not feel the need to justify their work or justify their position, but rather recognize that we have students who aren't doing what they need to do on the STAR test and the end-of-course exams, and we need to do better in presenting strategies on how we're going to get better outcomes. And, so thank you. It's good to know that we have, and we have for the past several years, but to have an administration where when we, we come up short, nobody's trying to hide the ball, nobody's trying to spin the results to make them look better than they are. They're willing to say, yes, we got better scores on those last eight, but these first three indicators are something we've really got to focus on. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last comment I would make is that in our next...
Last comment I would make is that in our next Lone Star Governance presentation, we want to continue focusing on PBMAS. See, the best school boards in the state, in my opinion, they know more than just the taper report. They've dug a little deeper. And so, we're going to ask um, our assistant superintendent for elementary to speak to us about bilingual instruction as it pertains to PBMAS. We also would like to provide a career in technical education. I think we scheduled that for January. And so, we want to keep this conversation going, where we are fanatical about student outcomes. And we've studied it not just on a surface level, but when we come to work tomorrow morning, we're going to dig deep down to every student. So uh, I'd like to applaud again, Ms. Tressel, for um, stepping up and, and really showing the level of confidence that uh, the department has and willingness to support um, our movement to improve student outcomes. That's all we have on this presentation tonight, Mr. President, if there's no further comments or questions.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson, anybody else on the board have any questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Tressel.
Thank you so much.
Uh, anybody have any reports on any of the committees on which they serve on behalf of the board? All right, uh, then we'll move on to five E, which was the issue that Ms. Cooper so eloquently addressed during her comment, the IR campuses.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to communicate to the public that we've had an outstanding month of conversations, last three weeks. Um, had standing room only meetings all over the city. And I'd like to, to thank our local media partners uh, for covering them. If we had a meeting on a Monday night before, I'm assuming she went to sleep, there was a story out. And it was good, it was a good summary, very accurate, very factual, and we do have a situation where we're seeking input from our community. Uh, we've engaged, what we've done since then is uh, our staff has engaged in uh, the decision to apply for a Transformation Zone Grant, which is l- only for uh, campuses that are going to participate in House Bill eighteen forty-two or Senate Bill eighteen eighty-two initiatives. Uh, we're working with our grants department and TEA to get that grant submitted for approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what we're requesting. And it is due November thirtieth. So we've worked fervently on that, and we will continue to get that submitted on time right after Thanksgiving break. We've also completed uh, several meetings with local nonprofit organizations. And all of them have been very fruitful, and as I said in our last community meeting, our plan is not only to identify an in-district charter partnership with a local nonprofit, but to be quite candid, we plan on using several local nonprofits as part of our transformation plan. Very proud to report that organizations such as LULAC, NAACP, the YMCA, Prosper Waco, The United Way, all have agreed to step up and be part of our plan going forward. So the work that we're going to be doing will be different than it's ever been in this community before. So we'll have another update next month, but we just want to thank our staff for working so hard on the Transformation Zone Grant. Thank our community for attending the meetings, and we look forward to even additional services, like Ms. Cooper mentioned so world, uh, mentioned so well in our public comments. And we're trying to get more books in our kids' hands, and you'll see a detailed literacy uh, initiative that will be rolling out in January of twenty eighteen. And lots of great things happening in the Waco Public Schools. That's our update at this time, Mr. President.
Any questions or comments?
Dr. Nelson, I just want to commend you for reaching out to the community, uh, and as you said, to have so many established 501(c)(3)'s in this community, nonprofits in this community step forward and want to offer their help, and, and, and to really partner with us to turn these campuses around is very gratifying.
Thank you, sir.
Um, move on to discussion of items on the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions with respect to the minutes or the budget amendments? Any questions on the bid awards at item C or D? Any questions on the renewal of bid awards at item D or F? Any questions on the inter-local with uh, Houston ISD on the SHARs program? Any questions on the additional appraisers for T tests? Uh, items I and J were discussed in closed session. Are there any uh, questions on the STAR incentive plan at item K? All right, uh, any other announcements, Dr. Nelson?
Um, no, I just wanted to be sure and congratulate Mrs. Sherry Trotz for recently receiving a TASBO procurement and government and financial records award. And uh, her, Ms. Davis, and Mr. Cartwright do a great job, and wanted to congratulate Ms. Trotz on her award. She'll be recognized in January.
Say, ten years in a row?
Ten years in a row.
Wow.
And also, I was, I would like to apologize publicly to my, um, one of my trustees, Mr. Norman Manning, who celebrated a birthday recently. Want to say happy birthday to Mr. Manning, belated.
I'm sorry, Larry's not here to sing happy birthday to you, that was a... All right, uh, is that all, anybody else have any announcements from the dais? Then with eight fifteen, eighteen, we'll stand adjourned.